This evening and we'll move right on to number five approval of minutes. We just have the one set for August 28. Do they have a motion?
I move approve the regular in closed session minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Marina, roll call, Jim. Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes. Correspondents, I have the first one.
Their correspondence.
In your packet on page 10, we got a thank you card from the Village of Montgomery to thank the library for participating at Montgomery Fest. We have cable every day that they have the festival and then we also were in the parade. So it's a thank you card from them. We also had a couple of things in the comment boxes. One was a request for a DIY bookmark as a prize choice for the children's scavenger hunt. One was asking for something called Tooties, which is like almost like a toy where you can set up an action figure on top of it and it'll start reading the story. So it's like a storytelling toy. And the last one, I apologize if anyone's offended, it's asking for age limits for trustees. I'm hoping they meant term limits.
Okay. All right.
There's no name on that either, so no further information.
Well, that wasn't printed by a youngster.
Why don't you have volunteers? Okay, that's it. We'll move on to number seven, financials. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's my issue. Krista.
On page 12, we have our revenue and expenditure fund balance report. This is all, everything's in line. The only thing that's a little odd is that there's an empty space under the general fund. That remains zeroed out until we get the audit and then they give us that number. So that is why that's empty, which is not normal. And then revenue and expense reports starts on page 13. There's just a few things in here of interest. Under interest income, it's higher than we expected due to increased interest rates. So it's higher than what we had before. Under miscellaneous income on the top part there, that is due to the Oswego TIF that we got. So we've got more miscellaneous income than we had expected. Under expenses, if you go down, it's the fifth one from the bottom, reliability. That is our insurance that we just paid and we pay that upfront. So that's why a big chunk of that is gone. And then... Yeah, I think that's it until we get into the bills. So if anyone has questions on anything in there.
Can I have a motion first and then we'll take questions?
Motion for approval of the fund balance and revenue and expense reports.
Thank you.
A second, then?
Okay. Now, questions, comments? Marina, roll call, please, Jim. Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez? Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant abstain? Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to number eight, accounts payable.
So that starts on page 22. The only things that are kind of out at the norm, you'll see a storage products. If you go downstairs in the children's department and the tea department, just you've got some slat wall and caps put on the shelving down there. So that's what that is. Oh, that's right. We actually only ordered some, but they sent us the wrong stuff, which also fits our other shelving. So we're getting a 40% discount on it. Yeah, so. On page 24, library market, we are working on a redesign of our website. We're working with a company that specifically does library websites and the goal is to make it much easier to access some of the frequent questions we get such as like how do I reserve a meeting room? Some of that stuff you really have to dig for. So the goal, I think it's three clicks maximum and you should be able to find whatever you're looking for. So we're very excited. This company seems to really do a good job with libraries. And that's the only thing I just liked is being out of our normal stuff in the bills.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills needing around $362,726.
Second.
Thank you. Question? Walters?
Yes.
Conant abstain? Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Directors report. Assistant directors report.
Yes, assistant directors report today. A couple of things, at the last meeting, we had a question about one of the numbers that had come up. I did consult with the attorney. That is our levy number. We will see that on the levy in October. And he re-looked at all of the information. It's all good.
So there's nothing in our documents that connected to?
No, no, no. He looked it all over and he said, as long as it says gold about levy, then it's a good check. Couple of things, we got special library cards. I don't know if you guys have seen these. It's National Library Card Sign-up Month and it's also our 60th anniversary. So our communications department have these cards designed and anyone who gets a card in September is getting a special anniversary edition library card.
Can we get a new card?
Can we get one?
You know, she said if they have any extra at the end of the month, they would consider it.
These are really cool.
A lot of fun things to do. Yep.
Yep.
And then on the directors' report, one more thing, I don't actually have listed on here, I don't know if people noticed, we had a bunch of new signage installed at the study rooms, above all the doors, it says study room one, study room two. And then over the bathrooms and like the children's program rooms, we've got some big signs that you can see like from across the building. They say like yeah, classrooms and children's program rooms. We, a couple of noted items, we had our staff training. The focus was health and safety. I got lots of feedback from staff that they really appreciated that. They felt like it was useful not just at work, but also anytime they were in a public space, just to kind of be aware of entrances and exits and things around you. We also in August did a Rover Rescue. We partnered with them for our dog days of summer, so lots of cute pictures of people with dogs. As far as our numbers go on here, same as last month, our door count is slightly down compared to last year, but our checkouts are way up. So a few less people, but a lot more books going out in August. On page 29...
Does that count like online checkouts or is that separate?
This is strictly physical items.
Physical.
Yes, that I was comparing. We had an author, Elizabeth Burke, come to the library in August. She, if you are not familiar with her, she wrote a book called Open House, which was one of Oprah's book club books. And she also wrote the story of Arthur Trulob and like 20 other books, I think. We had around 60 people come to hear her speak. She was a really good speaker. We even had someone from Minnesota drive in to hear her, so it's pretty neat. Most checked out books, still funny story and the exact same document book, so funny story might be one to try to get. I'm president. I don't really have the director's report.
Any questions? I like this format.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the director's report, please?
I move approve the director's report.
A second?
Roll call, please. Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant, yes. Deal?
Yes.
We've not had any committee meetings. Do we need any committee meetings?
Just to review the information from PNI.
Okay. Oh, meeting of the whole?
Yeah.
How about October?
Can we get some dates from Andrew and Orthon?
Pardon?
Can we get some dates from Andrew and Orthon?
That'd be good, because we can set him, if he's not available, it doesn't do us any good. Does, does anyone have a preference on the date? Do you want to stay with Wednesday or could we do it like a Tuesday? Tuesdays are good meeting days, too, usually.
Just depends on Tuesday, we check.
Why don't we try Tuesday or Wednesday and see, see what he has available? Okay? I don't know, I'm gonna go along with on this one, I'm not sure. Anyway. Okay, we'll schedule that. Moving on to unfinished business. We had a couple of policy that we had first reading on last time. The first one is the work in overtime, hours of work.
Yes, so it's just one change. The FLSA has changed what they consider for employee to make to be considered exempt. And they're also going to change it again in January, so rather than changing it to this new amount and then having to have you guys vote again in January, I would like to update the policy to just say they must make the minimum as outlined in that salary threshold and that we always have to follow that FLSA salary threshold.
And we had that last month?
Yes.
Okay. Could we have a motion on second reading, the approval of the policy of hours of work and overtime? Please.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the changes to the hours of work and overtime policy.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Roll call. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant abstain? Okay, moving on to unpaid leave absence policy, this we saw last month, too.
Yes. This one is just adding a sentence that says they must use available PCL before taking unpaid leave. And that unpaid leave must be approved by library administration, which would be Sarah, myself, or Melissa. We've had a lot of people who have paid time off, but they would rather stream it through something else. And they want to take a couple of weeks off in the summer and then a couple of weeks off later. And it's just getting hard to cover shifts with people taking so much unpaid time off.
Makes sense? Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I'll move approve the changes to the unpaid leave of absence policy.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Questions? Roll call. Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant abstain? Deal?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to, let me see, is the relief mural for the main entrance of Oswego campus. And as I recall, we looked at this at a previous meeting some time ago, a few months ago. And we were confused because we couldn't tell what each of the things highlighted were and what they related to. I think Krista told me on the back, we checked with the Little White School.
So the one on the back, this one right here is the one you guys originally had and we didn't think there was enough detail. So the file we made, it still has those same numbers, but the Sarah contacted the Little White School Museum.
Annie Jordan?
Annie Jordan. She went through and gave us a lot more background on how they would be related to Oswego and Montgomery and Boulder Hill.
And this will be posted with?
And I think we could definitely have some sort of a chart down below to explain to people what their, how it's related. Yeah.
Not my detail. I think we already approved doing this. It's a question that we wanted to make sure we understood. Correct?
Yes.
Does anyone have any difficulty with the new explanation as it is?
Well, it's interesting. Will, will we include this information near the, near the mural?
I think we probably should.
That's interesting.
Probably along with the key.
Yeah.
That's kind of cool.
Yeah, I, I rate, having that information near the mural would be great. I mean, I haven't looked here my whole life, so especially, you know, for transplants, they're coming in line to a lot of these references.
Okay, I don't think... Do you want, you want another?
I think that that's where we left off, is just to approve they are before we started.
Gotcha. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the mural with this key?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the sign of the mural on the Oswego entryway.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Jim. Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant, yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. That's cool. Okay, moving on, new business, FOIA. Christmas walk.
The Christmas walk is coming up on December 6. We have had a request that we could allow our parking lot to be used for volunteer as well as accessible parking for the building. And also the building to be used as a place for volunteers to warm up. And in exchange, they have offered us a free booth at the Christmas walk for the library.
This, we've done that every year.
Yeah, I don't know if they've given us the free table every year.
We should recharge it as more formal, so the festival would, yeah.
Could we have a motion on 12A1, please?
Motion to allow the library parking to be used for the voluntary and accessible parking and the building to be used for volunteers to warm up in exchange for a free booth at the Christmas walk for the library.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions, comments? It's been a busy place the last couple of years. Okay, roll call, please, Jim. Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant, yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
In conjunction with that, you're not closing the library?
I could close it, too.
Could we have a motion on 12A2, please?
I'll make a motion to close the Oswego campus at 2:00 PM on Friday, December 6th for the Christmas walk.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, got it. Roll call. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant, yes. Very good. Moving on to 12B, FOIA officers, let's talk about that.
I think since Sarah hasn't been gone, we've realized that we, probably having her just get the emails for FOIA, it's not the best idea. We were looking at creating a like FOIA@oswego.lib type email that I would have access to, she would have access to, and Melissa would have access to. So if something comes in and someone's out, kind of all knows what's going on. Yeah, legally, even if it sits, it still comes and it's being delivered, I think. So we would like to create that and, and that's that.
Okay. Does everyone understand that? Okay.
So how, how would that give information to have, that's the email that we would want that to send?
We have it on our website currently. And then we have it posted in the lobbies as well, so we have to change both that to just as...
So now in any case, sending it to the director?
Yeah, now it says my email and the director on both the written policy as well as the, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes a ton of sense.
Just don't want to miss.
Be done with this thing? Okay, could I have a motion on 12B1, please?
Allow the creation of a FOIA email where all FOIA requests would be sent and all FOIA officers would have access.
Thank you.
A second, then?
Very good. Any questions or comments, others?
So like today, I don't recall us, like if there's a FOIA as board members, I don't recall us seeing those. Shouldn't we be getting FOIA requests?
No, you have to go through a FOIA training and it's just to the library and then they request documents. And then we reply with the documents that we have and the legal options. Chris just finished the training last week, so that we're, and then we contact, you know, to make sure that the information we're giving out does not have any personal information that can be tracked according to the law.
I guess what I'm asking is more for the board. Should, should we be more aware of FOIA requests coming in? Is that something that we actually should be doing by the law? I mean, it's a communication and I just...
Like if there was like an agenda point saying this week we received X amount of...
Well, either that or, or copy on the request or, you know, to the board. I mean, that's kind of my concern is that the visibility of what's happening in FOIA hasn't really been there for us as board members. And I don't know if any of the rest of you think we should have more visibility or not, whether we, whether there's a legal issue, but we should actually have more visibility.
I don't think there's a legal issue. I don't have a problem with us getting that information.
I guess I would be curious, like historically, do we receive a lot of FOIA requests? I mean, like before this last year?
Before this last year, I hadn't received a FOIA request in 30 years.
Okay. And so were they like of any, were they noteworthy or was it just kind of?
Usually what it is, is businesses requesting vendors. They want to know which vendors we use, what kind of large things. We've had labor unions asking what kind of building things, you know, we've had that sheet of things. We usually once a year get requests for the names of the members of the library and their email addresses. So just those general ones and then more housekeeping things.
Right. So those kinds of things may be not as pertinent for us to be privy to every single thing that's going through. But yeah, I guess it's a judgmental thing, basically.
What they respond to is properly within five days.
Which would be nice just to have it in our email. So if we're, if you're not monitoring your email, you just don't have to worry about it. You want to see if it comes in our, I mean, it's not like we get that much in our email anyway, so. I check the day.
I think we would just probably want to make sure we have a set policy as to who applies. We get FOIA requests, we don't want somebody who's not a FOIA officer being like, oh, let me give you this information. Because that could have legal repercussions.
Yeah, you're right. I mean...
Why don't you put together a policy or proposal?
Check with the attorney, too.
Yeah, see if there's any legal implications to it. Okay. And then bring it back next month and we can take a shot.
So, so can we amend the motion that had the policy? Because I don't think there's a reason to stop the motion, so.
I don't, I don't know that we need to do that, but we can do that.
Or, or we're just, we can just approve the motion and then work on the policy.
Look for that next one. Okay? We have a motion and a second? Can I remember? Okay. Roll call, please, Jim. Martin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, 12B2 adds Krista as a designated FOIA officer. Could I have a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to add Krista Katzen as a designated FOIA officer for the Oswego Public Library District. Second, then?
Thank you. Any questions?
Only question I have is a proper motion to name a person or a role or title? Or do we have to name a person before it?
I, I'm not a lawyer, but normally you just name a person or a title.
So you'd have to have the training.
Yeah, she has to have the training. The training would be under her, her name.
Okay, roll call, please, Jim. Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant, yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 12C, authorized signers for library checks. We've been a little light lately in signers, so therefore we're looking for a motion to add Krista as a signer, authorized signer for checks for the library. So right now it's Sarah, Terry, myself, so that would be the ones who we have.
It couldn't be just the two of them?
Yeah, we did page 38, I did want to make clear, wouldn't be like she's signing and I'm signing.
Yeah, we can, yes, you're one of us.
Yes. And this one maybe you do want to amend to say assistant director? I don't know. That would be better, because it's less specific as well.
Do we have a policy on the director signing checks?
No, we don't. We could create a policy. Check signers?
No, we approve it now and bring us a policy, okay? And it can say the director is assistant director. So for now, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the assistant director to be an authorized signer for library checks.
Thank you.
Do we want the motion to be assessed here or do we want it to be for the assistant director?
Let's, let's make it this amendment, the policy will make it job specific. That makes sense?
So, so do we want the motion, she said assistant director, do we want that to be back to Krista?
Well, Krista recommended maybe saying that just because of...
I mean, I, this one you don't have to have any training course or maybe you are, would want it just to be assistant?
Because if we go over the library policy, I mean, it's not Krista till the end of time.
Yes. I should tell my one, I'm retired.
So let's go with assistant. So let's go with assistant director, and then the policy will be director and assistant director for our signers. Okay?
Yeah.
You made a motion. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Okay. Thirteen, open session. The board will now receive public comments concerning items on this agenda. It calls communication reports from citizens or representatives from other agencies. Set comments should not include a discussion of personnel matters, which should be brought directly to the attention of the director. We're meeting as a meeting held in public. It's not a meeting of the public. It is brought to the president of the board to recognize members of the audience. You are recognized to address the board. You are asked to stand and look by yourself and address the whole board. Comments will limit to three minutes. Being said, Mike.
Good evening, Mike Kremski. So recently, the Attorney General's office determined that this board was in violation of OMA. This board improperly restricted public comments, and I gave you a copy of that letter from the Attorney General. Just wondering if the board is even aware that they have an OMA violation. I also gave you a copy of the public comments policy. The public comments rules established by this board are vague and can be interpreted in an arbitrary, subjective fashion. Their content base may allow for the president to make rule changes not defined in the current policy on the spot. I'd like to just go through a couple of those rules that are unconstitutional, and I'm asking the board to reconsider the public comments policy because it will not hold up against another OMA violation if you try to uphold that policy. Rule number eleven states individuals addressing the board must at all times adhere to the library policies and other rules as may be necessary for efficient and orderly conduct of the meeting. So what library rules apply to the public comments? Which other rules apply? And how are people supposed to know what these rules? If, if someone fails to return a book on time, are they barred from speaking to the meeting? This rule allows a president to restrict speech for speakers with whom he disagrees without due process and without proper notice in advance to the people regarding rules governed by public comments. Rule number fourteen states abusive, profane, frivolous, harassing, and repetitive comments and or personal attacks cannot be permitted. If any member of the public indulges in such remark or otherwise engages in conduct injuries to the harmony of the board and the meeting, this speaker will forfeit the opportunity to speak at future meetings. That's totally unconstitutional. There's no way they will ever hold up in a complaint to the Attorney General. Who will decide which comments violate the rules? And this is arbitrary, subjective standard right for abuse. This rule is an attack on the basic tenet of our constitutional republic. This rule is a content based and violates the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and Article One, Section Four and Five of the Illinois Constitution. Rule number fifteen states failure to adhere to the above rules or other library policies may result in the removal of the speaker from a property. What rules and policies apply? Who will determine that and who will enforce the rule? There is no rational relation to it between such a rule and public comments. And number seventeen states the board president shall have the authority to determine further proceedings regarding public participation not otherwise defined in the board policy. So this is allowing the president to make up rules as they go along, and he doesn't feel like, you know, a rule today or with due process and without proper notice advances the people. So I'm asking the board to bring this back to the board meeting, put it on the agenda, and discuss this public comments policy. There's no way this board could actually adhere to the policy you created. You're going to get yourself in legal trouble again, and you're going to get another OMA violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is closed session. Could I have a motion to go into closed session at this time?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, Jim.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant?
Thank you. Take a minute and.
Okay. We're back.
Okay, back in regular session. We have an employment under new business, fifteen A employment. I've entered in a motion on our director. Got her salary from twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase Sarah's salary by four percent for the high school.
Second.
And, and I'm sorry.
Retroactive to.
July.
To four, one.
Second.
Bookkeeper says, thank you. And all I would say is we're very pleased with the direction that we're going. We've got a lot of big things on the horizon, and we know that our leadership will, will take us there successfully. So with that said, motion or roll call, please?
Conant?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Thank you. Upcoming scheduled meetings, October twenty-third, five-thirty, Montgomery Campus. I think that's everything. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold it real fast with that. Have a second. Thank you. Would you pay to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.